All right, good evening, everyone calling together. The Planning Board meeting, September 1st. On this Thursday, we did have to change the date of this meeting. Usually it's the first Tuesday of every month, but due to the holiday and a conflict with the election, we had to move it to today, September 1st. And we did send out proper notifications, so we are in compliance to hold this meeting this evening. Brief statement that I have to read. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with the government order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General law chapter 38, section 20. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the Planning Board. Utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the question-answer function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record. For those of you joining by phone, press star nine. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand. A copy of this recording will be on the city's webpage. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure account accuracy. Okay. Roll call of our board members, Jim Sweeney.
Here.
Larry Hassan.
Here.
Britta Das.
Yeah.
We also have Deputy Chief Ed Williams. Rob May, Director of the Planning Department. Evan Sears, who works with Rob and our, Rhoad has, Rhoad been introduced yet?
For those of you who don't know, Rhoad Germaine is here with us. She is a new administrative assistant in the Planning Department.
Welcome, Rhoad. Nice to have you.
We should say we have four members present and we have quorum.
Okay. All right, so we'll get into the agenda. We do have several that are, have been continued. So if you are here for 1449 Main Street, that has been continued. If you're here for 148 North Montello, that has been continued. 1159 Main Street, also continued. Did I miss any, Evan?
Just those three.
Okay, all right, so.
Continue to next month, next month's meeting.
So besides some A and Rs, we have a couple lot releases. And on the agenda, we have 48 North Pearl Street. We have 340 and 346 Warren Ave. We have Zero Westgate, map 33, Lot 55. And then last, we have property 20, Winter Street. Okay. First, we'll start with, I don't know, continuing to review and acceptance of the minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Jim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Britta?
Yes.
Tony, yes. Okay. Moving on to the A and Rs, Evan, you take that for us, please.
Sure, okay, so the first one is 30 River Street and 55 Emmett Street. These are just two abutting properties. They are going to take a chunk out of one of them and add it to the other. That's really it. The, the piece that they're moving, I believe they're taking it out of 55 and moving it to 30 River Street. And River Street already like has that piece of land fenced in. So this is really just kind of cleaning up something that's been messy. There's nothing really major with it at all.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. Roll call, Jim Sweeney?
Yes.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Britta Das?
Yes.
One of the guys all of us, yes. Lot releases, Evan?
We have one more A and R, Amelia Estates.
That's right.
Yep, they were just approved at the ZBA for their 17 lots. And they're just coming here, they're just refiguring, like configuring and altering a few of their property lines. Again, nothing major, just some few little revisions here and there. So again, that's, that's really it.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Britta?
Yes.
Tony, yes. Okay, now moving on to lot releases, Evan.
All right, this lot release isn't really a lot release. It's actually something that was approved by the Planning Board back in 2020. The project straddles the line between Brockton and East Bridgewater. And they're coming up on their two-year deadline for the approval to expire. They're, they're being held up by East Bridgewater. It has nothing to do with Brockton at all. Brockton is good for the project to move forward. So again, they're just asking for that extension in case they can't finish it and go forward before the two years up due to East Bridgewater.
Motion to approve extension requests?
Second.
All right, roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Britta?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you. Okay, there are no street acceptances, no proposed zoning changes. First applicant is Douglas A. King for 48 North Pearl Street, Representative Attorney James Burke.
Hey, I am. Oops, sorry. There he is, sorry. Promoting Attorney Burke to panelist. And Jim, is there anybody else on your team or are you it tonight?
I believe I am it tonight, Mr. May.
You are it, excellent, thank you, sir.
Well, I, I believe we also were going to be visited by Counselor Farwell. But from our perspective, if I may proceed, Madam Chairwoman.
Absolutely.
I have the pleasure of representing Doug King on the project at 48 North Pearl Street that quite frankly, I thought was an exceptional pro, project for the city. And I, I think some members of the Planning Board may have agreed. It was, it was turned down. And Mr. King, who is an experienced and very, very good developer, reached out to Counselor Farwell as well as some concerned citizens across the street to talk about how they could potentially improve the project and get one that would meet consensus of some. Obviously, you will not get consensus of all in a project like this. So what we have today is, our charge is to find specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the unfavorable action was taken. What was the major topic of discussion at the Zoning Board of Appeals and is identified in the decision? Is our current fire chief was concerned of the lack of access for the ability to fight fires with the rear building. And as a result, Mr. King and his engineer designed a, a fire lane on the left side of the building that I believe was presented before the fire chief himself and, and, and thought it met the general requirements of what he was concerned about. So it addressed that specific condition. There was also a discussion about whether or not it was slightly too big. That having been considered, Mr. King reduced the density by two units. So now what we have done is we have shrunk the footprint of the building as well. There are greater space in terms of the setback rear, setback side, the creation of the fire lane. And as a, a, a benefit of reducing the density, we picking up four spaces, we have four spaces more than are needed under the ordinance. And I would suggest there was one member of the zoning board who specifically talked about the possibility of guest parking, and that was even met. So what we have, I think, is a very, very substantial modification of a very good plan that reduces density, creates and benefits in terms of the public safety and the ability to fight fires and shows a developer who's willing to listen and to try to meet the needs of his neighbors. And that is it.
Okay, thank you for that. So I'll just open this up with the question. The reason for the denials, from my understanding, is there was lack of showing hardship. So how does this new plan address the lack of hardship?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure that, and I think we've had this discussion before. I'm not sure that's even an issue before the board. The issue of hardship is one that relates to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that's conclusory after you take into consideration the various factors that are presented to it. So these new changes will be the fundamental basis for which it'll be brought before the Zoning Board of Appeals to address the issue of hardship at that time. But in this forum, I, I don't think that's even relevant, respectfully.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The planning staff and I met with Attorney City Solicitor Shaves yesterday to discuss this very issue. She reminded us that the Planning Board is not the one that determines whether or not there is a hardship. It is in fact the zoning board, and so we were, we are right on that. However, she said that if the plan was, or application was rejected for lack of hardship, the applicant still needs to show that there has been new information that shows a hardship. So if the applicant is not showing that there is an actual hardship or, or is a condition that could be considered a hardship, then we were to take that into consideration when you're, when you're voting.
Right, that's my, my understanding as well.
Respectfully, I, I find that very confusing, Madam Chairman, because I identified and addressed the hardship issue in its entirety before the zoning board, which I'm happy to do with you today. It relates to.
But that, they denied because they didn't find it, find hardship.
That's absolutely an inaccurate assessment of what the actual law is. The, the issue of hardship relates to the specific facts that go before the zoning board for a determination. So taking Mr. May's suggestion to its conclusion, if you've already addressed in its detail the completeness of hardship under 48, then how would you in fact have to expand upon that when the very premise of the hardship relates to fundamental issues like ledge, the size and shape of the parcel, the issue, you know, relating to the ability to place the property or the, the structure on the narrow lot?
Unfortunately, the city solicitor doesn't attend these meetings. But she made it very clear to us yesterday, and I know Evan and Rhoad were both present.
You're saying, you're saying that anyone before the board has to prove hardship to you?
No.
Before proceeding?
No, I'm, what I'm saying is that if you are applying or a return to ZBA, when you, when the ZBA has declared that there is no hardship, that the applicant needs to identify issues that the zoning board may then consider as hardships for this application to advance. She said that if, those, if you are denied on the grounds of hardship, your first level of appeal is to the Superior Court as opposed to trying to return to ZBA.
Oh, that's absolutely nonsense. I, I'm sorry, Rob, Rob, I apologize.
This is what we got yesterday.
I apologize, Madam Chairman, I apologize. That's absolute nonsense. You are obligated to make your first appeal by the very defined definition and procedure of the statute. You would not take a first appeal to the Superior Court. That's absolutely ludicrous. I, I, I don't, I don't know how else to say it, Rob.
Unfortunately, this is how we were, this is how we were instructed.
Well, if you'd like to maybe.
The interpretation, then it, it, it's up to the board to make their decision, though.
Can I, can I suggest a alternative then? Can I suggest that we continue this for a month? And I will be happy to meet with the city solicitor, Madam Chairwoman, and to go on and try to get clarification so that we fully understand what the procedure is in Brockton and its planning board rules, which don't seem to be published, and what's required to go before a board seeking something beyond specific and material changes. So if we can continue this respectfully for a month, I'm more than happy to sit down with the Lot Department and try to make sure, maybe I'm wrong, and they'll explain it to me. But that's what I think we need to do if you're willing.
Madam Chair, it's, it's up to you. I do not have a problem with that.
Okay, good, either do I. And first, let me say, I understand and appreciate your frustration and, and I appreciate you understanding where we're sitting because has Rob explained it is our understanding as well? So absolutely feel free to have your meeting. I think that we will, as well, if the other board members want to join, Rob. And I think I'd like a meeting with the solicitor as well because this is our understanding and I want to be, make sure it's rock solid as well. And we're being fair to you, Attorney Burke, so.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman.
Madam Chair, I, I realize this is going to be continued. However, there are two people who would like to speak, and I believe that that is Counselor Wen Farwell and Counselor Tom Minicello.
Okay, first, do any board members have questions that they want to address before we open it up?
I guess I would, you know, once we get that clarification from, you know, that conversation, it would be helpful for the board to have that relayed because we have seen similar things come in and as a first appeal to the, to the state, I've just seen, as a member of this long, I've seen otherwise too. So clarification would be great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. And, and just a quick retraction, I'm sorry, but the city solicitor is Megan Bridges, not Megan Shave. My apologies to, to both of them on that. So if you would permit me, Madam Chair?
Sure.
This is Counselor, Counselor Farwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I agree that I think it would be very wise for you all to have a written opinion from the city solicitor so that it can be studied. I would certainly want to have a copy of it because I suspect it will govern how counselors appear before the Planning Board and, and make presentations. So I thank you for your willingness to consider continuing this. And I look forward to the added information that will be gleaned during the next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Minicello, you had your hand up a minute ago. Counselor Minicello, if you would like to speak, you can use your microphone.
Yep, hello.
Hello, you're alive.
Hi there, how are you? Thank you for hearing me tonight. I reviewed the order of the Zoning Board of Appeals as I was there that evening. And, you know, the, you know, the decision, in my opinion, prioritizes through the listing of the reasons and the basis for denying this decision or for the denial, I should say. And, you know, the first item is a hardship. There was no hardship expressed. I mean, I know that Attorney Burke made the argument that he thought that the better use would be of residential multifamily units. But, you know, Attorney Burke was a very successful and is a very successful attorney who's had a practice in that location for close to 40 years. So to me, there's no hardship there if, if the commercial use that it's currently used for, which is a professional building, a law office, can certainly be developed by a developer as skillful as Doug King to build a, you know, a premises or a building that is in conjunction or in compliance with the current zoning, which is C5. The second reason they listed was C5 commercial use, you know, does not include the project that is being presented. You know, was just residential, you know. Basically, what is being requested based on hardship was we want to rezone that area for residential. And the, one of the reasons and basis was no. You know, you haven't shown the hardship to justify a variance to violate, you know, the current uses under C5. In fact, the city council recently revised the ordinance with regard to C5 zoning, and it still does not include residential. It adds a whole bunch of different uses. And, you know, if, if, if Mr. King through council would like to reapply or, or basically provide a different use and compliance, well, that's a whole different situation. But what he's proposing, in my opinion, are superficial reasons and not substantive ones. I mean, I understand Chief Nardelli, I, I would say it was a piling on. Chief Nardelli says, you know, he's the fire chief. Of course, his first, his first inclination is not zoning, but fire trucks, fire safety. So he zones right in on, okay, can fire, can I get a fire truck around this building to put out a fire? There's a problem. And then, you know, he of course chimes in and says, no, I can't. So, you know, of course, you know, that's one reason. But that wasn't the primary reason. That was, that was later on in the list of reasons why this was denied at the zoning ZBA. But, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're going to continue this matter, that's fine. But, you know, if, if you were going to go forward tonight, you know, I would argue that the reasons being presented are purely superficial and not of substance at all. I mean, to change the parking lot, that wasn't a big deal. I mean, yeah, that can be changed. But there were, there were several reasons prior to the parking lot and the fire lane that were much more substantive, that are not being addressed in any way, should reform in this, in this amended application to this, to this Planning Board.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have their hand raised, Rob?
I do not have anyone with their hand raised at the moment. So if anybody attendees would like to use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen, you'll see a hand up like that. If you're calling in, press star nine. And also want to say that since this topic is being continued to the October meeting, God, I had to stop and think what month it was. You will also have another opportunity to testify. And I do have Counselor Farwell with his hand up. And so I am going to, Counselor, whoops, there you go. You should be able to speak now.
Just one last comment. When we finally flesh out all of the additional information from the city solicitor, I just quickly took a look at the Planning Board rules and regulations that are posted. I would ask that that opinion be posted so that other individuals, other attorneys, developers, people who might find the information from the city solicitor beneficial, it be open and available to everyone, be fully transparent with how the Planning Board is going to go forward in the future with respect to certain zoning board decisions and Planning Board actions on considering a return to the ZBA. So let's, let's put it out there once we have it.
Thank you, Counselors. As a matter of fact, we would probably ask the board to amend their rules and regulations, which are required to be posted with the city clerk on our webpage and recorded with the Recorder of Deeds. So thank you for the.
I thank you again.
Thank you.
So I have a Ellen Pitts. Excuse me, Ellen, Ms. Pitts? You should be able to speak now.
You're on mute, Ellen.
Ellen, you can speak if you'd like to now.
She's, Ellen, you're on mute. You have to unmute your speaker. Technical difficulties, maybe.
Well, unfortunately, we are not able to hear Ms. Pitts. But if she can hear us, just remember, we will be meeting again in October on this same property. And I hope you will be able to join us then. Just in case you have issues, please, you can email your comments to planning@cobma.us and we will make sure that we read them into the record just in case we have continued microphone problems.
Okay, is there, do we need a motion to continue this?
A motion to continue to October meeting?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Britta?
Sorry about that, yes.
Yes, okay, Tony, yes. All right, thank you, Attorney Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
All right, next, we have 340 and 346 Warren Ave. Applicant is John Andrade, and it's Attorney Burke.
Thank you very much, if I may, again, for the board. My name is Jim Burke, I'm Attorney at Law with offices at 48 North Pearl Street in Brockton. I have the pleasure of being asked to represent Mr. Andrade. I was not representing him before the Zoning Board of Appeals. So this was a new look for me when he came in. And I, I understand that there were two major issues that were of great concern at the hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the first one was that the pathway for emergency vehicles was, I won't say inaccessible, but, but not functionally the best. And as a result, Scott Farrier has created a revised plan. In addition, there was concern by some members of the board about the parking authorization that he had from the city for the lot across the street because concerns that it impacts the commercial businesses and, and potentially should not be used for residential parking. So the, the applicant addressed those. What he's done is he's come in with a major construction change. And now he is looking for 16 units, initially in 22. But with the 22 units and the additional structure that's created in the other section of the parking lot, what he's done is he's created Palladium parking so that there is parking underneath, which expands the number of parking substantially. Currently, there are 62 spaces. In the last hearing before the zoning board, they were looking at 50. So how we intend to hopefully attack the issue before the, the zoning board with the parking is this. There are a configuration, there will be 14 Palladium spaces that will be reserved individually for the tenants. There will be another eight additional spaces that will be reserved for the tenants. The remains of the rear parking, which amounts to 13, will be available for tenants and guests. And we would suggest there is no exit on the commercial side to the rear of the building. So from a practical perspective, commercial tenants will seek to use that space substantially less because it's more of a burden, more of a walk, more, more problems. On the north side of the structure, there's another parking lot, which creates 12 spaces. And, and the intent is that that will be a mixed use of commercial and residential spillover. The employees of the commercial will be directed to use the Brockton spaces across the street for commercial use, as well as they will attempt to get the, the patrons to consider doing the same. So what I think the concern was with a member of the, the board at the Zoning Board of Appeals was, we're taking residential use and we're putting into too many commercial spaces affecting commercial businesses. We've reversed that flow, I believe, with this change now. So that from a practical perspective, as, as well as a, a planned perspective, the commercial will use up entirely the Brockton spaces and will have only an overflow in the remaining spaces on the side. The additional units result in, in a more expensive project. And the more expensive project requires the additional units with the Palladium parking. The configuration in. The configuration, and Scott's gonna go through with it right now, we believe is, is for the best, he's gonna go into the change, especially with the fire lane, because he had direct contact with the, the fire chief on that. And Scott, I'll let you go.
Attorney Burke, good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Can I ask if I can share the screen, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I've gone through substantial training in the last few weeks since that last meeting. So I'm fairly confident I can get it to work this time.
I can't wait.
All right, thank you. There we go. Please tell me you're seeing it.
Getting there.
Yes.
Okay. I thank my kids for this, so. All right, so what you're looking at right here is the original plan that was denied by the Z B A. And not to pile on with what Attorney Burke said, the, the biggest issue was we had a proposed twelve-unit building right here in what I'll call the top right-hand corner of our property, making it difficult for a truck, a fire truck to enter from Warren Ave, swing around the building, go around the cars and get back out to Cottage Street. So I think, in particular, the, the two fire chiefs on the Z B A were, were really concerned about that. So as Attorney Burke said, we run back to the drawing board and we came up with this plan here. So now what we've done is we've moved the building from the top right and have kind of tucked it in the back of our existing building at three forty. In doing so, we now have almost a straight shot from Warren Ave, straight out to Cottage Street. So a more direct route for the fire apparatus. Hopefully that, that satisfies the, the safety personnel that, that we're hoping to satisfy. So we think that's a, a major improvement. As Attorney Burke said, we have the podium parking right here off of Cottage Street for, for fourteen spaces. The rest of the, the spaces would be right here on the back of Cottage Street. The parking that Attorney Burke was saying would be kind of open for both commercial and overflow residential at different times on the north side of the building is, is right on this corner here. And then again, the parking lot across the street where we received permission from the parking authority, I'm gonna zoom way out. Again, this is the site. We received permission from the parking authority for fifteen spaces across the street in the, in the parking authority-owned parking lot. So those fifteen spaces Attorney Burke said would be certainly for the employees of the commercial space. And we encourage as many commercial customers as possible to pack over there, as well as the overflow from, from residential parking. Quick recap, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And although it seems as if the, the parking plan has improved, but I believe we're right back to where we started with where's the hardship, which was the original denial. Jim, you were at that meeting?
Uh, yeah, I was, I believe I was actually one to deny that on the original. Based, and I believe it was based on parking, it was kind of jamming into what the, you know, the city parking. However, if you want me to continue, I, I, I feel as though this is a significant change. In, in, also for future development in that area. So the adjustment of, of that parking, it seems a little bit more self-sufficient. And you also have more, you have the overflow on the top of the lot and you also have the extra across the street. So I don't know how far you want me to go, Madam Chair.
Well, I'm just reading the notes, said that Z B A denied due to no hardship. Although they talked about parking, that wasn't the reason for denial.
I think on the denials, I think on most, you're gonna see hardship from the Z B A. That's prob, that's almost standard issue.
So I, unfortunately, I feel like we're back to, we need to talk to the city solicitor and get clarification on this.
At, at least on this one, Madam Chair, if I may, they, they never mentioned hardship in the decision. What, what they said was that the, the units would derogate from the intent of the zoning bylaws will negatively impact the orderly development of the neighborhood, et cetera, and parking. They never mentioned hardship in the decision.
Really?
Evan, can you?
Not at all.
No, I'm sorry, Attorney, that is incorrect, though. It says no hardship dealing with the locust was found on the decision. And I know we, again, the city solicitor told us that we're, we can only go off of what is actually printed on these decisions. So if the Z B A is putting in no hardship in all decisions, then that's what we have to go off of, regardless of what was discussed at these meetings.
Well, it's, it's gonna be, sorry, if I can just interject, it's gonna be on all, it's gonna be on all of them, sorry.
But I think that.
Impossible standard, Madam Chairwoman. That's, that's, I guess, when I'm, I'm picking up where Mr. Sweeney is. It creates an absolutely impossible standard. Because yes, all of them, that's, that's commonplace. Hardship is the first thing they say.
Yeah, I, I understand. And I think that it would be helpful, Rob, if we could have a representative from, or the chair of the Z B A at the meeting with the city solicitor with myself and you and other board members that wanted to.
We'll try to arrange that. Just for the public record, the Department of Planning worked for months with the applicant to make improvements to this plan. The department supports this idea and this new plan. However, we still have this directive from the city solicitor on hardship that needs to be addressed. It, we've gotten, you know, several several directions. We need a final memo. We have asked her for a memo that we can make public.
And I do believe she said that she will be drafting one and releasing it soon. It's just, we had this meeting just recently, so it hasn't been in time for this meeting. That should be coming up.
We're still left with the issue of the Z B A's using hardship, no hardship for all of their findings or denials and it's, and it's in writing, so it's not helping us now. And I apologize, Attorney Burke. Rob, if we could get that meeting maybe by the third week in October?
Certainly hope so.
Okay. Would you, do you want to consider continuing this? Attorney Burke?
See, I, yes, if, if.
Our hands are tied, I'm sure you understand.
All right. I understand your position, and I think that makes the most sense.
I do have someone with their hand up. Kroski, F. Kroski? I'm murdering your name, I apologize for that. You're an attorney, so please don't sue me, but you should.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, I'm the owner of thirty Cottage Street, the brick building, professional building across the street from the back of Warren Avenue. This is the first rendering I've seen of any plan, nobody's ever approached me. And this neighborhood is becoming problematic as far as security and hygiene and everything else. And I'm really concerned about the traffic. And this is the first I've heard of any kind of fire lane being directed from Warren Ave over onto Cottage Street. We have a lot of parking problems. We have the blighted building, the abandoned church next door to us, has caused a lot of problems. There's been no maintenance. And I, and the way I've seen the practice of, of maintaining that Warren Ave property doesn't instill in me any confidence that we're gonna get any kind of welfare from the city if, if we don't have some restrictions. And I don't, just don't see, from my forty years in this building, how that fire lane is going to work and how we're not gonna be encumbered by a lot of extra traffic and a lot of serious security problems. And I mean, security problems. Everybody who is in the city is familiar with what's happening at the corner of Belmont Avenue, Warren, Belmont and Warren Avenue. And on Wales Avenue, it's never maintained. There's all kinds of parking problems on Wales Ave. So that's just gonna be an overflow from Warren Avenue onto Wales Avenue, which has never been securely patrolled by the state. I just think there has to be a lot more thought. And I, I appreciate that there's been an investment in this property. However, I, I, I haven't seen any real progress in that investment. I've seen the tie deck placed around the building, I've seen the windows put in. But I also see a lot of storage problems. I see there are three or four pods out back, there are ski-does, there are Jeeps, there are all kinds of things stored out back. As I said before, not to repeat myself, but it's important to say the way the property, the practice of the, where the property is maintained now is not instilling any confidence in me that the promises made at this hearing are going to be fulfilled. So I think there's a lot more thought and that should be put into it. And I would like to have a lot more input into this situation because I'm gonna be one of the, one of the real, I'm gonna be one of the, you know, the, the, the real parties that would suffer some damages here. And as a matter of fact, I think there are eight trailers out there at this point right now. I saw a lot of shelving and, as I said, there are, there are ski-does, there are boats, there are all kinds of things. And the only reason we haven't had a traffic problem is because there is a chain link fence there now. However, it's not maintained, we've got weeds growing from the courthouse all the way down to the auto shop. So I, I just believe that we are entitled to a little bit more input and that the influence that the board has in making these changes should be imparted to us in some way so that we won't be suffering anymore than we are at this point from the traffic, the security problems, et cetera. And I'd be happy to answer any questions because I've been in this neighborhood for a long time and I, I know it pretty well and I can tell you a lot about what's happening here and what's not happening here, which is even more important. So I have a lot more to say, but as I said, this is the first I've seen any rendering or the first I've ever had any kind of communication with the city, the developer, the contractor, anybody else.
Thank you. I have one other person with their hand up. Evo? If I'm pronouncing that right, Ivo?
Hello, good evening, this is Counselor Tavara, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize your name.
Yes, actually, because I do have.
Ivo threw me, sorry.
Yes, I use somebody else's computer right now. Yes, I just, good evening and thank you so much for having me here. And I've been listening to everyone and I'm here with the, you know, the owner of the property right now. As you guys can see it, this is on my work. No, and, well, I, I, I've been listening to all the, you know, conversation back and forth, up and down, even I listened to the concern. I, I think this is such a great opportunity, especially on Word Two. And just for me to answer, I think it means a Joseph. I know, I understand his concern too, because this is a concern I have every day. It doesn't have nothing to do with one person, especially on Word Two, it's disaster all over the place. I've been dealing with the tons of complaint. I think we need to start changing with the city first. I take it like more than thirty-five complaints per day. I got all texts on my phone, all photo on my phone, like the trash debris is all over the place, the traffic and accident. I don't know, so much going on and like, I'm just speaking really on Word Two. Like, you know, I think this project here, if you guys gonna grant this project, I think this is a great opportunity. Because like, you know, the city is gonna be improving more and something like, you know, great is gonna get done. The way the property look at right now, because the property is under construction, of course, like, you know, I, I've been there, I see what's going on. You know, it's nothing done, it's nothing approved, he struggle to do a lot of improvement in the city, to build the community and something great right in the center. And then I, I, I think we should not just sticking with so much negative things without starting yet. I think we should look in a positive way because I, I've been there, like, you know, I'm just living right across the street, like in almost eighteen here, like, you know, I know the way building was. I wish I can invite you guys, can take a little tours and see what's going on. The improvement has been tremendous. Like, you know, I can even tell you, like, you know, ninety-nine percent. And then like, you know, again, just not to repeat myself again, he's still under construction, he's still struggling. You know, we talking about the middle class right here, you know, try to improve, try to progress, try to do something great. Try to bring more revenue for the, for the city, to bring more tax for the city. I think we should all embrace and, you know, just kind of, you know, all working together and, you know, find a solution, the way how can we, you know, get this done. You know, again, to go back again and like, you know, believe in me, Brockton has only two quarter enforcement outside. They tried their best to the end. It's just like, you know, we need to work like inside, inside the city, in outside the city, you know, just to kind of have a better, you know. I understand his pain because I'm dealing with a lot of calling complaint every day. I wish it's something we can have a more quarter enforcement, to force the quarter more and to do better for Brockton, have a Brockton clean. And, you know, but this is something great, we should take it, you know, all look at it and give opportunity and, you know, just to progress.
Thank you, Counselor Tavara.
If I could just interject, Rob, for a second. So Counselor Tavara's, would, would that be your role? Because this isn't within our scope, but would that be within your role to meet with the applicant or the owner, John Andrade and Attorney Burke to address these issues, to, to work on that, since you have so many complaints?
Yes, actually, yeah, he's right here, he can explain right now to you.
But we, we heard them all and, and again, that's within our, our scope and this most likely will be continued. So I just thought I would throw that out there and you all should meet sidebar this, these type of issues because this isn't what we're here to, to.
Okay.
Vote on.
And I also have, I apologize, I also have Counselor Mendez, who should be able to speak now also.
Hello, how are you? Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. And I just wanted to express my support for this project. I do understand that this will certainly be continued today and I, I can see the reason why. But I just wanted to say that I'll be joining, you know, Counselor Tavara's and Attorney Burke and the owner and try to get these issues resolved. I see there's a lot of significant change in this project. So I, I do see that we're getting somewhere. So we want to work with the owner to make sure that he's able to develop that building and, and get it going and able to actually do something nice for the city. So I just want to put it out there on the record that I'm in support and I'll be working together with the city and the owner to make sure this goes through. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Anyone else, Rob?
No, I do not see anybody at this time. And I think you might want to entertain a motion to continue.
Motion to continue to October.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, James?
Yes.
Farida?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tony, yes, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Attorney Kroski, since we've, we will get back to you. You'll have a chance to speak at the next meeting, but they've already moved on.
And maybe join the counselors with that community meeting.
Yes.
The owner.
Next agenda item?
So that, this is Zero Westgate, map thirty-three lot fifty-five. We have applicant Carm Properties and Strong Point is their representative.
I'm moving Eric Diaz to panelist and Mr. Patel is being moved to panelist. Eric, is there anybody else on your team?
There may be a Colleen O'Shea in the audience. And she's from Hilton, who is the tenant of this particular project.
Ah, CNN O'Shea.
There we go.
I am promoting her to panelist. And the floor is yours, sir.
Excellent. For the record, Eric, first of all, good evening, everyone, Madam Chair and members of the board and staff. For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer. Um for the record, Eric Dias, Registered Professional Engineer with Strong Point Engineering Solutions. Uh with me tonight on this call is Mahavia Patel, representing the applicant and Colleen O'Shea, representing Hilton. You folks have actually seen this project before. We will be for you earlier this year for a petition to return to the ZBA. Uh which you folks granted, uh we were successful at the ZBA. We needed two things from them. We needed a special permit to construct the hotel. Um and we needed a variance um for a setback to the park. Um the DW Fields Parkway and we did receive both of those things. Uh variance obviously conditioned on an agreement that we came to with the Parks Commission. To provide some, a certain degree of setback, some additional screening within that setback. And some fencing along the retaining wall to screen the park and keep debris out of it, things like that. Um we have since been to the Conservation Commission and they approved the project. We received an order of conditions. Um the Conservation Commission review included obviously a review of any work within the buffer zones. But because this is a commercial project, they also hired a third-party review consultant to review our drainage design. Um which we went through some changes and I'll walk through uh what the, what we actually landed on. Um and it's.
I'm sorry, are you gonna um put up your plan?
I am going to right now.
Thank you.
I was getting to that. That's my big reveal. So here is the cover sheet. Um let me just refresh everybody's memory because it's been a while since we've been here. Uh this is zero Westgate Drive. This is on the top of the page, page north and actually. Yeah, magnetic north. This is the Shields MRI building that's out there right now. Um on our property, our property is this triangular shaped property or oddly shaped property down here. Uh there's an auxiliary parking lot for the Shields MRI building. Now, this is just about never full anytime that we've been out there. Um and the Shields themselves. Do have the parking, they meet the parking requirement on this lot for what the zoning bylaws require, so we're not. Handicapping them in any way by getting rid of this auxiliary parking lot. Um this auxiliary parking lot has drainage in it that is completely self-contained. It was built after the Shields was built. Uh which is why this drainage, I believe, is self-contained. It doesn't tie in anywhere. It all infiltrates back into the ground. Uh we have a wetland body off the property right here. I don't know how I did that, but luckily I can get out of that. Um and a hundred-foot buffer zone that casts here that's within the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. This land over here to the east and to the south of us is the DW Field Park. So what we're proposing is a hotel. It is a, this plan actually says seventy-nine. I believe it's actually a seventy-eight room. Four-story proposed hotel and I believe it's going to be true by Hilton if I'm not mistaken. Um the, we, for the layout, we have um compliant parking for what the zoning requires. You can see along the property line here, we have a ten-foot vegetative buffer. That is part of our agreement with the Parks Commission and part of what our variance with the ZBA is predicated on. So that will be installed and maintained. There are certain language in the ZBA decision to maintain this in perpetuity. Um there is a small retaining wall located where my cursor is here. The site is on the down, the lower side of the retaining wall, so this actually sticks up and we're proposing a small. Um a micro mesh fence on top of it for further screening. Um going through, we did um talk about the Conservation Commission review. And they did ask their third-party peer reviewer to look at our drainage design. Fortunately, on this site, we have fantastic soils. We've done test pits just about all over this place and what we consistently find. Is sandy soils to a good depth with no groundwater. So what we were able to do. Is collect all of our storm water from the site and it all goes into a recharge area that is located on the property. Right in this location here. So the vast majority of storm water from this site is going right back into the ground. Uh which is obviously a bonus. Um and that includes rooftop runoff area as well. So complete recharge on this site from a storm water management perspective. Um we have provided a full erosion control plan. It's also been reviewed by the third-party review consultant that reviewed this for the Conservation Commission. Um we've provided a lighting plan. Um all of the lighting fixtures are going to be downward facing. They're going to be dark sky compliant LED. Uh you can see by the tick marks along the sides here that we're not lighting up anything off the property. Uh which is obviously one of the goals of the lighting ordinance in the city. Um and we provided a landscaping plan. Um and in that landscaping plan, a lot of it is geared at the buffer zone between us and the DW Field Parkway. Um and the screening that's required through there and the ongoing maintenance that goes through that. Um and the rest of this, I believe, is just general construction details, which I don't need to bore you all with. Um so that is the, the overall of what we are proposing. Um it hasn't changed very much from what you saw between the request to return to the ZBA and now. We've been able to maintain a very consistent layout throughout this whole project, I think, which is good. Um and that's it. Rather than ramble on further, I will turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. I see that um the city engineer is now content with all the changes and so is zoning and conservation. Um opening this up for any questions from the planning board members?
Madam Chair, if I may, um I remember on the uh stipulations, uh we kind of pounded into these guys that. In uh, you know, other members that we didn't want to see, uh this is a place for, you know, long-term living or family living. Did those stipulations translate down? I'm just want to see, you know, the backside of that, just Eric, if you could answer that maybe?
Yeah, um I don't, and Mahavia can probably speak to this even better than I can. Um there is no plan for this to be long-term living. And I, I believe that is written directly into your special permit with the ZBA.
Okay.
So I believe that then makes it enforceable that if you ever did find out this was turning into long-term living. Frankly, the city could pull the special permit and it would be in violation.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure that uh, you know, that made it on there and that was really our major concern, otherwise. Um, you know, we loved it and we love the fact that the Parks Department approved the. Um, you know, the, the new setback to the park, so.
It's just for clarification on that, when you say no long-term living, like you mean um a permanent, permanent address for someone. Uh like a lease thing, because sometimes these hotels are used for if someone has a house fire and, and the insurance pays for six months for someone to. Live in the hotel. That wasn't your concern, was it?
Well, i- is an example from the other hotels that are in the area, um on the other side of Westgate Drive.
Gotcha, okay, yeah.
If I remember correctly, and I might be making this up, so please backstop me if I'm wrong, but I think the language was that this couldn't be anybody's. Address or mailing address or something like that is what we landed on.
Right.
Um so this couldn't, eh, this couldn't be anybody's mailing address, so that would stop this from turning into long-term living. I'm sure. If there was a situation where our family was displaced because of a house fire, that the city would, would certainly not oust them from the hotel. Um but certainly, we don't want that to be commonplace or anybody taking advantage of that.
Right, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Oh, good, I am unmuted. Um Rob May, uh we've been working very closely with the uh, uh Strong Point Engineering. And uh we are very happy with this plan. Um I don't know if you have had a chance to um go to the Hilton webpage, but their product. True um is a um crisp, modern. Um approach to hospitality, uh dare I say, yep. Uh and, and Pam has stayed in one, so um she was very happy with, with the product. Uh and I am thrilled to welcome, although it's a tad premature, I'm thrilled to welcome Hilton to our community.
I would agree with you, so.
Uh Madam Chair, one more question. Um I, I ask this usually on all site plan approvals. It, say you get approval, when are you looking to build? When would you start building?
Um I believe what we've talked about internally is we really wanted to make this meeting so we could stop building this year.
Okay.
Um is so my, my anticipation is that if you folks approve this tonight, we'll wait the appeal period and get the bucket in the ground as soon as that lapses.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, any other questions?
So uh to the back of the building or towards the north side, I don't see any lights. Um if you go to your uh photometric plan.
You're right, we don't have any photometrics on that. Anything that's back in the building would be wall packs. Um that would just light up. There's a pad, you see this hatched area right here. That is a patio, um and this is just a walkway that, you know, wouldn't be used much at night. But would certainly require some pedestrian lighting, so we can, we can get some wall packs represented on this building that would face downward and just light up. That walkway.
And also that uh, that uh patio kind of uh patio. Uh so is that brick or stone?
I believe it's going to be uh like a paver patio or like stone pavers or even stamped concrete perhaps.
Okay, because all your water is going to, towards the south, right? So I was wondering if it is. You know, gonna clog that area or not, so.
I, I don't believe it'll clog that area. The, the grading plan shows that the water is traveling toward Westgate Drive. And that location, um so I think that we would be okay there.
Sure. Thank you, Carita. Oh, ready to open this up to the public?
There are members of the public that would like to address the board. Um please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen. You'll see a icon with uh somebody's hand up. Um and if you're on a phone, press star nine. And at this time, I do not see anyone with their hand up. Madam Chair?
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve with standard conditions and to note um. Fellow Parina does uh proper lighting on the north side of the building.
Second.
Okay, roll call, James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Carita?
Yes.
Tony, yes, all right.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Uh and let me say too, just while we're here, uh as Rob mentioned, we did work with the city on this quite a bit. And the city was great. Um they, they were certainly very helpful and willing to cooperate with us, so big thank you to everybody involved.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. And ladies.
Bye-bye. All right, next, uh we have a preliminary subdivision twenty Winter Street. The applicant is Pedro Elias and Elias, sorry if I mispronounced that, Representative J K Holmgren. Scott.
And Scott has been promoted to panelist. And may share his presentation, presentation.
You must make. Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Uh good evening again. Board members, Scott Farrier from Holmgren Engineering. Representing Pedro Elias, who owns a house at twenty Winter Street. Uh it's kind of a, an interesting situation. He has a house that is. Pretty much split right down the middle between two zoning districts. It's uh R two is the front of the property on Winter Street, whereas. Existing single-family home is. The back of his property is zoned R one C. Uh his total lot area is a little over thirty thousand square feet. As you folks know, the R two zone requires seventy-five hundred square feet. Uh so what we have for you tonight and. If I'd like to push my luck and share the screen one more time, Rob?
Fingers crossed.
There we go. So. Mister Elias has his existing house right here, number twenty Winter Street. Kind of a little bit of a hammerhead uh situation. The zone line runs right through the middle of his property. So again, his existing home, it's a single-family home, a smaller home. It's zoned R two. It would remain that way. Uh what we're looking for is uh permission from you folks for uh preliminary subdivision approval to go ahead with the ZBA. And we would be looking to divide the property into two lots to create this lot up here, Lot B. Uh which would be the, the site of uh the Elias family, single-family home. Uh Mrs. Elias in particular wants a bigger kitchen and some bigger living space, so uh they're hoping to build a, a larger home here for their family. It would be zoned R one C. Uh the minimum lot size is thirty thousand square feet. We would be at about sixteen thousand square feet. So that uh due to the shape, the topography, those are the reasons that we'd be going to the ZBA. Everybody around us has uh roughly about a ten thousand square foot lot. Uh they're all primarily single-family homes. The new home would be fronting on and have its access off of Merritt Ave. Which is a little bit of a, of a dead end. Merritt Ave does not make it all the way out to Winter Street, but it does uh proceed past Mister Elias's property. So uh what we're looking from you folks is permission to proceed to the ZBA, uh where we can hopefully make our case to them. Uh upon success.
You're drowning out, Scott. Can you hear us? I don't think you can proceed without Scott, correct, Rob?
Did he drop out completely?
Well, half, partially there.
Um Scott? Would you log off and log back on? Or maybe stop sharing, that would help.
Call your kids to help.
I think he has frozen up.
Give him a couple of minutes.
I am going to try to drop him to attendee and bring him back. And that did not help.
He's back in attendees now.
I see him there. I will promote him to panelist and let's see if that helps again. Scott, you should be back. Maybe.
Is there anyone else um here? Is the applicant here?
Okay, I did the stop share.
Scott, if you can hear us, maybe dial in?
I think it's his computer that has frozen up.
Worst case, we do, could we vote a continuance or?
Is this the last case on the agenda?
I, I believe it is.
It is.
Yes, it is.
An agreement to continue this if he can't get back on. I would say one more minute and that would be our only option. While we're waiting, um Rob, do you agree?
Um I agree, let's, but let's give him a quick a minute.
Right.
Yeah. He just sent an email, said he's trying to get Buck back on, but I'm not sure if he'll be successful or not.
And you email him back to try dialing in? Please?
Sure.
Scott, are you there?
It looks like he's there, is he trying to unmute? Because he's on two lines, it looks like, I see two on my screen.
Yeah, I see two on my screen also.
Can you remove them, Rob?
I will remove one of the Scots. I think it would be best to continue.
Is there a motion?
Motion to continue.
Again.
Roll call, Larry?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rita?
Yes.
Tony, yes, to continue, okay?
Okay, so for the attendees who may want to speak about this case, we are continuing it to the October meeting. You will have a chance then to make comments on, on the project. So we apologize for the technical difficulties at Scott's house.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Again.
Hey, Larry?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rita?
Yes.
Tony, yes, all right, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you all.